Wow. Ready? Call to order, the second night of the 2019 spring Wakefield Town Meeting. Before we would get going, Ms. McGonigal-Santos, you have something to say? I heard rumor has it.
At this town meeting, I want to acknowledge two men who have been instrumental in making our town the excellent community that we all know it is. I'm going to first start with Director Rik Stinson, who is retiring. He's in a far better place today than Wakefield, as much as we love Wakefield. I think he's in New Zealand, Australia, Hawaii. He and his wife are taking a well-deserved vacation. But Rick has served as DPW director for 18 years with honor. He is the best that Wakefield has to offer, first beginning his 40-year life of service as a high school intern at the Wakefield Municipal Gas and Light Department. Many of the highlights, too numerous to mention during Rick's tenure, include the water and sewer being enhanced and upgraded, stormwater program well-developed, single-cycle curbside recycling, automated refuse collection, rebuilding and maintaining athletic fields, playgrounds, the dog park, having a huge part in rebuilding and maintaining the World War II memorial and walkover remembrance, and also working on the rail-to-trail. Please join me, and hopefully Rick can see our giving a little bit of honor to him because he's served us so honorably, and thanking myself and the town council, and thanking him for an unquestionable devotion to making Wakefield a better place for us all. So, clap your hands for it. Our second person of honors, Chief Rick Smith, who I know is here in the audience. Chief Smith, as you all know, is retiring from Wakefield this summer. He also began his life of public service as a young summer officer. In 2004, we were lucky enough to have him appointed as our chief. For the past 15 years, he has not only created a force that has kept us safe, that is highly professional, highly educated, but it's a force that polices with compassion and empathy. And I think we can see that every day, and I think it is not, that is not always common in police departments. And I know I appreciate that, we appreciate that as a town council, for him to have that impact on our community. His work with the opioid crisis, wave domestic violence, the Boys and Girls Club, mental health issues that are involved in our town, his devotion to that, in addition to the most important thing he and his men and women do is to make us safe, certainly makes Wakefield a much better place, and we will miss Rick at the helm. And I just wanted to acknowledge both Director Stinson and Chief Smith officially in this last town meeting, that they'll be in that capacity. So, thank you, Rick.
Mr. Mullen, I think you're up here.
Mr. Moderator, Tom Mullen, Town Council, 9 Jordan Terrace. Pursuant to Section 36-3 of the general bylaws of the town, I move that Articles 22 and 26 be taken out of order and addressed next by this town meeting.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion?
Mr. Moderator, the town administrator has asked me to make the motion and presentation under Article 22 relating to the acceptance of a state statute, and the Bylaws Committee wishes me to be present to answer questions under Article 26, the so-called storefronts bylaw. I regret that I cannot be here next Monday if this town meeting extends to a third night. Though my associate attorney would fill in for me, I want to participate personally, at least with respect to these two articles. Therefore, I ask that Articles 22 and 26 be taken up next.
Any discussion? This is a two-thirds motion, which will require, will be counted if we don't have unanimous. All in favor? All opposed? Anybody opposed that I can't see? Okay, that motion carries unanimously. We will move on to Article 22, followed by 26, and return to 11. Article 22, see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of General Laws, Chapter 40U, concerning the collection of municipal fines for the purposes of enforcing the terms of Section 175-8 of the general bylaws of the town regarding the removal of snow and ice from sidewalks, and to authorize the town council to appoint a hearing officer called for by General Laws, Chapter 40U, Section 6, to take any other actions necessary or appropriate to implement a program under General Laws, Chapter 40U, or to see what the town will do about it. Mr. Mullen.
I move that the town vote to accept the provisions of General Laws, Chapter 40U, concerning the collection of municipal fines for the purpose of enforcing the terms of Section 175-8 of the general bylaws of the town regarding the removal of snow and ice from sidewalks, and to authorize the town council to appoint the hearing officer called for by General Laws, Chapter 40U, Section 6, and to take any other actions necessary or appropriate to implement a program under General Laws, Chapter 40U.
Is there a second? Thank you. Mr. Mullen?
A year ago, town meeting approved changes to Section 175 of the general bylaws requiring owners of commercial properties and multifamily residences with more than four dwelling units to clear snow and ice from the sidewalks abutting their land within 24 hours after precipitation. That bylaw expressly contemplated that the town might someday adopt General Laws, Chapter 40U, which is a local acceptance statute designed to let municipalities collect fines for failing to remove snow and ice from sidewalks. Specifically, the statute requires that the enforcing agents, in our case, the police or the DPW, issue citations which must either be affixed to the building or served by hand on the person in charge of the property. Anyone who receives such a citation must, within 21 days, either pay a fine of $200 or request a hearing. The statute requires the town council to appoint a hearing officer to hear such appeals. The town administrator has told the town council that he would be willing to serve as such a hearing officer. If an offender fails to pay on time, notice is sent to him, and after an additional 30 days, fines and interest may be assessed on his tax bill and become a lien on the property. This process is much quicker and simpler than the alternatives, which involve a clerk-magistrate's hearing in Malden District Court and the possibility of a criminal trial. In the interest of streamlining the enforcement of the town's snow and ice removal bylaw, the town council urges an affirmative vote on Article 22.
Any further discussion? Being no discussion, the motion before you is that the town vote to accept the provisions of Chapter 40U to authorize the town council to appoint the hearing officer called for by Section 6 of that law, and to take any other actions necessary or appropriate to implement a program under the program of fine collection thereunder. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Article 26, to see if the town will vote to adopt as Chapter 155 of the general bylaws entitled "Registration and Maintenance of Vacant Commercial and Industrial Buildings", the following. Section 155, it's in your program, folks, so why don't we take a few minutes and read along? Otherwise, we will be here till Friday. Mr. Lieber will explain and decipher for you this seven-page article. Mr. Lieber, you have a motion first.
Thank you, Daniel Lieber, 1 Elm Street. I move that the town vote to approve Chapter 155 of the general bylaws set forth in Article 26 of the warrant with the following revisions. First, that in Section 155-2, the definition of vacant building-
No, 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 no. You make a motion first, then you make your amendment. So, he wants, he wants to add it in here, first time in? All right, you got an extra copy? You can give it to me after.
I move the town vote to approve Chapter 155, the general bylaws set forth in Article 26, with the following revisions. First, that in Section 155-2, the definition of vacant building or vacant property be revised so that the text preceding subsections A and B shall read "Any occupied non-residential commercial real property or commercial unit that has a visible storefront on the ground level that ..." And, second, that the first sentence of 155-5D be revised to read "The owner may include advertising materials in the vacant space or displayed in the vacant property street-facing windows, subject to the restrictions concerning signs set forth in the zoning bylaws of the town."
Is there a second? You know, I just got one. I'm going to give you this one.
Thank you. And I'll explain what the modifications are as well. The purpose of Article 26, which was unanimously approved by the Bylaw Review Committee, is, and was brought before the Bylaw Review Committee by private citizens, is to ultimately help beautify our town and prevent us from having suburban blight by having empty storefronts on commercial areas of the town itself. So, the purpose of the article itself is really very simple. When there is a commercial storefront, and it is limited by the definitions, one of the modifications that was made actually at the suggestion of the Finance Committee, to make it explicitly a part of the definition, is so that we only are affecting vacant storefronts that are street-facing. And if a storefront is vacant, and there are several around town, just as we were driving around looking, that we found quite a few, if they have extended vacancies of more than 90 days, it will then require registration with the Building Department so that we will be aware of what those vacancies are. At that point, there will be four options. Ideally, fill the vacancy or use the space in some way, shape, or form. Many landlords currently do this. If we take a look at spaces that are vacant, many of the landlords will use it in some way, shape, or form, and that is an ideal way that the space gets utilized. Alternatively, there are three additional options. One is that they can actually request to use public art. Public art would be designated by the Wakefield Cultural Commission, which is a particular, which is a public body designated by the Massachusetts Cultural Commission. Normally, they go ahead and disperse funds that are applied for by different cultural groups for different artistic purposes. It's a group of citizens appointed by the town councilors, and they have done an admirable job in that particular place. Another option is that they could pay a fee of $100 per quarter that would cover the additional costs that the town will incur in doing additional inspections. Because it's space that is vacant, we want to make sure that there is additional police presence around it in case there are things that are happening that shouldn't happen. We want to make sure that the Department of Health is aware of and does the appropriate inspections, along with Building Department, so that spaces that aren't being utilized may or may not have the regular maintenance, and this will help defray those costs. The third option, which was specifically contemplated by the Bylaw Review Committee, is to request a full waiver from the town council. The town council is the body that's empowered to handle the day-to-day operations of our town, and the reason behind going through that route and adding that in is so that if there is an economic downturn, or if there is another valid reason for a person to have a vacant property, the town council can waive the requirements for that particular property. It has that ability, as long as it's consistent with the purpose of the bylaw, which I have full confidence in our town council will be used judiciously and appropriately. So, the purpose behind the language, which was adopted from a very similar bylaw over in Arlington, is hopefully to raise zero dollars. This is not an issue where we're trying to raise money at all. The purpose is to have storefronts that are used appropriately. There are benefits to having storefronts used. It will actually encourage other businesses. When you have an empty storefront, it hurts the surrounding businesses. We've seen this in certain parts of the downtown, where when one store, particularly an anchor store, goes out, it can actually have harmful effects on other nearby stores. We also wanted to very carefully contemplate and put into the bylaw the ability to have the various conditions set up and waived as appropriate by the town council. So, the times were extended from the Arlington bylaw, and in Arlington, it actually has been beneficial. There are several properties that are vacant but are displaying public art. To have public art instead of having brown kraft paper is certainly a more attractive option, but it's not mandated. No one is required to use public art. They can, a property owner can use the property however they wish, in accordance with the existing zoning bylaws. We're not making any changes to zoning with this at all. We're not suggesting any. So, the property owner still retains full rights as to how they want to have a particular property used, and ultimately, the town will benefit from this. And again, there are properties throughout the town. It's not just any one or two properties there throughout the town that have not been utilized in months. And the town itself, from a financial perspective, has actually denied the ability, especially for extended vacancies, from actually getting the tax revenues for the operations that occur. Because when there's no operations, there is actually no personal property from which to assess a personal property excise tax. So, this actually, with having a better utilized space, will actually, again, increase the utilization of the space and help us financially as well. Ultimately, we want to have a town that's vibrant. This is one way, in addition to many others that are being taken. With that, I urge your approval of Article 26. Thank you.
Mr. Sherman?
Good evening. Finance Committee looked at this carefully, and although there were some amendments that had been made subsequent to our meeting in terms of our discussion, the Finance Committee still believes that the $400 per year is excessive, and voted on nine to five to make a recommendation for indefinite postponement.
Any further discussion?
Sarah Garen, 46 Valley Street. The Wakefield Cultural Council supports passage of this article. Although the circumstances may be rare that a property owner would choose this option, it would be an invaluable opportunity for an artist to have a public and engaging platform to expose her or his work. Storefronts are unique conditions where an owner and the public shake hands, so to speak, acknowledge each other, and we support the opportunity to afford artists the chance to connect with our community in any way that we can support. Thanks.
Mr. McGrail?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Brian McGrail, 81 Outlook Road. I certainly support the posting of public art in downtown in vacant windows. I believe, however, that that should be done in a cooperative manner with the property owners, by approaching them and suggesting to them that there's an opportunity to do it, not, in some respects, to somewhat force it upon them by implementing a bylaw that has an effect on their property rights, on the property that they own. With all due respect to Mr. Lieber, he stated that the bylaw is to prevent empty storefronts. I look at it as penalizing property owners for having empty storefronts. It was mentioned that vacancies, an extended vacancy for 90 days, 90 days is not a long time for a vacancy of a commercial property, especially a storefront. It's not a long time at all. In fact, often when people turn over tenants, build-outs and negotiations in that regard, lease negotiations, will go on for that time. Under this bylaw, if you go over that 90-day limit, you're immediately required, within 30 days of that, to file an application or a notice with the building inspector that then puts the whole world on notice, every town official possible that you have a vacancy, and then you're required to commence making payments, as is stated under the bylaw. Furthermore, I spent a significant amount of time looking at this bylaw, not as an attorney representing anybody, although I do represent a number of the downtown property owners who I can say are upset by this bylaw. Some of them own the property, they don't live in town, but they're aware of it. It's very confusing. This bylaw is confusing. There's a lot of contradictions in it. I had to read it multiple times, and I still have, you know, confusing aspects of it, a couple of which I will mention. I think it's important to note that this bylaw, as written, does not only affect the property owners of the properties downtown, it also affects the tenants. Under the definitions in this bylaw, owners includes property owners, or it also includes tenants of the property. So, in representing property owners negotiating leases, there's going to be an expense that's going to come to them, because if this bylaw goes in, if I own a commercial property with a storefront, I now have to be very careful how I negotiate that lease and language that I would want in that lease, and I would have to hire an attorney to negotiate that lease to make sure that this was accounted for. So, they would incur those costs. But again, it is a burden on the tenants as well as the owners. So, I do have, that leads to one question, Mr. Moderator, that I guess you would decide who would answer, perhaps Mr. Lieber from the Bylaw Committee, where the definition of owner includes, says anyone that has legal or equitable title to the building, or B, is a tenant with a legal right to possess. So, if there's a vacant storefront, who's going to make a determination on who to assess? The owner or the tenant? Who makes that determination? How does the town know who to point the finger at in that circumstance?
Dan, do you know that? Can you answer that question?
I'm going to refer to that to our town council, Mullen.
Town Council Mullen, get up here.
Well, Attorney McGrail is correct that often there is no way to determine as of record whether a tenant, who the tenant is. You can always determine who the owner is, and so I would say that in the vast majority of cases, the town would enforce against the owner, because we can readily determine who that is. The only tenants that could conceivably be enforced against would be any tenant with a legal right to possess the entire building.
I think there's circumstances that landlords could find themselves in. For example, if a tenant is operating a business and they're having problems, they basically stop their business, but they don't take their inventory out, perhaps they file bankruptcy, which results in an automatic stay from the bankruptcy court, that nothing can happen. So, now tenants, excuse me, landlords are in a situation that they can't do anything. They can't do anything. They are frozen, however, now they're subject to this bylaw and potentially paying fees. The other thing is that that $400 under the bylaw becomes an assessment and actually becomes a lien on their property. So, it puts a lien on the property. I think, in essence, what's happening here potentially is, I appreciate the effort to do something. Again, I think to approach the property owners, I know a lot of the property owners would be welcome to post public art in their building, and I think that's a better approach. Finally, at the last town meeting, we know the bylaw is for envision, Wakefield is moving forward, great thing, improvements to the downtown. I think we need to be aware that that's going to involve construction downtown that's going to take place, which will have an effect on the businesses and the landlords. So, I think what we might want to do is at least put this aside for a few years until all that work downtown gets done, we see what the effect is on that. If we then deem there's problems, perhaps we could revisit it at that time. So, I would urge to vote no on this article at this point in time. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
In the South?
Hi, I'm Cindy Schatz, 8 Corde Street. I'm on the Bylaws Review Committee. First of all, I'd like to make some responses to what Mr. McGrail said. In no way is this bylaw going to force property owners to accept art, nor is it going to force them to pay a fee. There are four options outlined in the bylaw, any of which the property owner can go after. Generally, I do accept, I do appreciate, I respect the recommendations of the FINCOM. However, in this case, I really am going to reject it. Their response that the property owners would find $400 a year to be too expensive, I think is kind of laughable, because we're talking about vacant properties for which a property owner is not taking any rent. The property owner can afford to have a write-off if he's having a loss. $400 is money, if he's really hurting, he's going to be working very hard to get a tenant in there, and we have some businesses that we could all cite, right on Main Street in downtown, which have been vacant for over a year. I don't think $400 over one course of the year is going to hurt that property owner. When it talks about how difficult it is to file the application if the business property is vacant, we're not talking about imposing a filing fee. We're talking about making a simple, a simple application saying that my property is empty. Therefore, if it needs to be checked in to make sure there aren't mice or any other health hazards, to make sure that there aren't vagrants in there, taking advantage of the property, that nothing else is happening in the property, it's very important to the town of Wakefield to make sure that the properties that are vacant are not going to be causing any danger to the properties next to them, which are occupied. And that's what this $400 is going to. It's not going to general coffers of the town. I'm sorry that Mr. McGrail finds this confusing. We have been working on this article for nigh on to a year. The meetings have all been posted publicly. They've all had the agenda items on them. We have been open to visitors at all of our meetings. We would have loved to have had the time to explain to him if he'd come to it. And one other comment he made was that the $400 a year, if that's the option that the property owner chooses to pursue, it would be like a lien. A lien is something that's against your property when it's unpaid. So, if the property owner is choosing not to pay the $400, not to go for a waiver, not to accept art, which is not being forced upon him, not finding a tenant, you know, there are a lot of options here. There's no forced lien, there's no forced art. I am very much in favor of this article.
Mr. Sherman, you wish to speak as a citizen now?
Yes. Cindy, just to be clear about my comments in the Finance Committee, we did not believe that $400 is too much for them to afford. That wasn't the issue. The issue for the Finance Committee was if you assign a fee or penalty to anybody, it has to be related to the cost of the service being provided. So, we did not believe, or we're not convinced, that $100 a quarter is the right amount for whatever efforts involved at the Building Department or within the town in terms of covering that cost. So, if it had been $10, maybe the Finance Committee would have said, okay, that's all right. But just to be clear, we're not questioning the $400 as being too much for the landlord to own and to cover. It cannot be excessive compared to services provided.
Mr. Chines?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jonathan Chines, 34 Hopkins Street. Would just like to thank the Bylaw Review Committee for the work on this article, and I do stand in support of it. You know, a lot of the points have been made, but I do want to reinforce two points that, to me, are really important as we consider this. You know, one is, on Monday, we voted for the next step in a pretty significant project to beautify our downtown, to make it more accessible, to make it more attractive both to residents and people coming to visit us. And I think that's an important investment in our community. But one of the things that we've got to understand is, if you look at a downtown area or any commercial area, one thing that can kill that vibrancy very, very quickly is having vacancy, having abandoned property. And so, what this bylaw does is it gives us another arrow in our quiver as a town to make sure that we're working collaboratively with property owners, to make sure that we can make those properties something that contribute to an attractive and accessible downtown, not detract from it. And I do want to highlight, is the second thing, the point that I just said in terms of working with the property owners and the landlords. You know, Mr. Lieber mentioned, you know, this is not intended to be a law, a bylaw where we're collecting dollars. I truly believe that, you know, success for this bylaw is not bringing a single cent of penalty money into the town. What I'd like to see, and as a member of the town council, what I'm looking for is a way in which we, as the town, can partner with landlords, partner with property owners, to make sure that when we do have a vacancy, that might be open longer than we expect, that we're working together to address that, and again, bring vibrancy into the downtown and other commercial areas that we all want to see. So, again, I support this bylaw, encourage you to vote yes, and thanks for your consideration.
Mr. Donaco?
There's a line here. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Paul Donaco, 17 Wiley Street.
Paul Donaco, 17 Wiley Street. Let's go back 10 years ago. This bylaw was first brought up back then because at that time, there was like 12 empty storefronts in the downtown. Over the course of eight years, we went from 12 down to maybe one or two. And there still exists one or two. Not because they've been empty, because there's been a change of ownership. Okay? And that makes a big difference because it's not the same owner that's making the building stay empty or unproductive. Some of them actually invested thousands and thousands of dollars to upgrade the insides and are waiting for someone to lease the property. So my question is to the Bylaw Committee, which did a great job on putting this whole bylaw together, how many landlords were actually invited to sit down? Not just that you posted the meeting, how many were actually sent a letter and said, we want your input as we construct this bylaw? Were any letters sent out to the landowners themselves in this process?
Is that a question?
Yes, it is.
Okay, then hold on a second. Mr. Lieber, can you address that question?
I can address the question itself. We did not explicitly seek to contact the property owners of actually any direct properties. However, we did reach out to approximately 15 organizations along with other property owners who had contacted us. In addition, we have talked with property owners. I've actually had conversations over the last couple of weeks with several commercial property owners downtown, and they actually have indicated they are supportive of this because it is very limited in scope to only storefronts. So it would not affect the second floors, third floors, basements, others, other components of their buildings, only the storefronts which they, as they put it, they can always find a good utilization for if they're an active landlord.
Thank you, Mr. Lieber. So with that being said, right now, there are three properties in question in the downtown area. It's the old Ski and Sports Act, the Molease Building, and the Hudson, I mean, the Napa Site. Napa Site, I believe, is currently being negotiated for sale. The Molease Building is currently being negotiated for sale. That leaves the Ski and Sports Act. Is this targeting just the Ski and Sports Act in the downtown area? Because that's what I'm hearing, is that we're focusing on the downtown, basically. I don't think that that's the proper thing. Someone made a comment about making a, developing a handshake with the vacant store owners to put art into the buildings. That handshake should be going out to every business that's open, not just the ones that are closed. We should making a handshake right now to Alano, to Active Motion Physical Therapy, they have great big windows. We should have art in those windows because a lot of people go into those stores. Why are we focusing just on the closed stores? I respect this article, but I agree with the FinCom for indefinite postponement until after the Envision project gets moved a little bit further so we have direction on what the downtown looks like after construction. We don't know what the construction is going to do to the existing businesses in that expense, from the junction all the way to the lake. So I would agree with that one motion for indefinite postponement instead of taking a vote on this tonight. Thank you.
Yeah? Want to respond to that question?
Tom Mullen, Town Council. I just want to respond to a concern that Mr. Sherman raised on behalf of the Finance Committee. He said that he is concerned, or the committee is concerned about whether $400 per year might be excessive in terms of being an unjustifiable fee. This, I should say, is the only thing that concerns me whenever an amount is set for a fee under any bylaw. Legally, the only thing that concerns me is whether it is a legal fee or an illegal tax. And the difference is, with a fee, the town is entitled to recapture only as much, approximately at least, as it spends in connection with the program. If it recaptures, if it captures more than the amount of its outlay, that excess is a tax. I have no doubt that the $400 here would be very easily defensible as a fee and not a tax. I say that first because the bylaw calls for entirely new inspections to be done by the building inspector, the fire chief, the police chief, and the health director. It also calls for a notice of lien to be recorded in the Registry of Deeds whenever any of these fees or fines are sent to, are put on the tax bill. And it's going to require some coordination at Town Hall to make sure that municipal lien certificates accurately reflect the addition of these sums.
Ms. McGonigal Santos.
Anne McGonigal Santos, 39 Converse Street. I'd like to speak in support of this. The genesis of this bylaw started a couple of years ago. And I know I spoke to it probably within the last year, and in support of it and excited by what was being done based on, I work in Boston in Downtown Crossing, and all of a sudden, the empty storefronts in Downtown Crossing started having beautiful black and white photos of surrounding businesses and employees and employers. And it made such a difference to the area. That effort was supported by the Downtown Crossing Neighborhood and Business Association, who thought that it made the downtown area more vibrant, and it really has. I think, I appreciate the concern about the fees, but I can tell you, as a member of Town Council, it would not take much at all for me to vote and to convince my colleagues to waive a fee if it was requested. We certainly are not going to force someone to pay a fee if they're in bankruptcy. We're not, we're not going to entertain it. As Jonathan said, this, we hope to not make any money on this. Some of what's been set out in, out in the community is, we'll be, you know, acting like tough guys trying to enforce this. That's not it at all. We just want to make sure that certain vacancies have an outward-facing appearance that looks nice to the town. And if someone doesn't want to put art in, that's fine. Think of maybe some other way you can make your storefront look nice. Economic times are very good right now. We don't have as many vacancies as we used to. A few years ago, we certainly did. And I think this, this bylaw, in conjunction with hopefully an economic development person that will help guide us through Envision Wakefield, will help us understand how this works in our plans, will work hand in hand with all of our departments. But I really, I hope people aren't worried that we're going to be out there forcing things upon people. We won't. And I know, as a member of council, I certainly would entertain waivers. We don't want to make money on this. We want to make sure that our downtown looks as lovely as it can.
In the south.
Heather Marino, 75 Holland Road. I appreciate all the work that the committee has done for the bylaw. I understand the intention is very good. But think of it this way, how many people here own commercial property? Have they gone through the hoops and jumped through all of the hoops necessary to buy them? Have they saved the money? Have they done everything that it takes to buy that commercial property? There are few and far between landlords who want to keep a building empty. Do we have that serious of an issue here in Wakefield that this is the problem? Perhaps in other towns, they did. My options, as I see it, as a commercial property owner, are to rent it. I always want to rent it. I always try my best. If I get a quick person, a quick tenant, maybe it's one of the ones people don't like. They don't seem to like bodyworks places. There's pushback against that. If I wait longer, or if you get a tobacco place, they don't seem to like those either. If I wait longer for another one, do you really seriously think I'm holding out? It doesn't work that way. Then I have a choice of art. You know what? Anybody that wants to come down to me, talk to me, I'll put any art in the building for free. No problem. You want to sell it? I'll do it. I don't have a problem with that, but I don't like being told to. And I don't like being told that my options are, I can pay a $400 fee for codes that we already have. It's not going to prevent fire, it won't prevent vagrancy, it won't do any of that. And those that really want to be crappy landlords will let the lien go against the building. And when they change hands, that's when they'll take care of it. Proportionately, how many storefronts are there compared to residential homes? How many people think that they have a crappy-looking neighbor? Does it devalue their home? Well, if the codes are broken, those need to be enforced and fixed, you're right. But perhaps their house doesn't look the way they like it. Do they feel it devalues it? I understand if there's a blight. But we have rules about blights. And when it comes to blights, you need to look at the underlying reason for how it got to be that way. Is it crime-ridden? Is it drug-infested? Is the economy down? These are the things that bother me when I think about this. Because now I have to register it, what are you going to do for me? I gave it to a commercial real estate people. These are the people that will get it filled. Now I have to register it with you folks? I'll be more than happy. And if anybody knows anything about commercial real estate, you understand too. You almost always have a little box on the side of your building with a key to it. Because we want at all times, the police and the fire to have access to that building. We do not want them ever to walk into a situation that could possibly harm them or they are unaware of. By all means, I will personally go over and tell the fire department and the police department when I have an empty place and say to them, it's empty, here it is. I want you to know what's going on. I want you to be able to go by there. Never do we want to put anyone in danger. And as for the artwork, if you put artwork into a building that doesn't have heat on it while it's in there, constellation builds up, perhaps the artwork is going to get damaged. Who's buying the artwork? Who's paying for the supplies and the labor and everything else? My expression of myself, do I get to do that? I don't even get to put my own artwork? Maybe I want my grandchild's artwork in there. Maybe you want my husband's idea of artwork. I don't think you do. Point is, I should be the one to do that. Yes, we do have a couple crappy landlords, but you cast a giant net over the rest of us for that? I understand and I appreciate what you're trying to do, but think about it, if I decided that White Houses shouldn't be White Houses because I thought that they ruined my neighborhood. I'm very invested in this town. I try very hard. I get what you're saying. But we are not facing a blight right now. We have rules for blight, we have rules for codes, we have all these kinds of things already. And I, you know, like I said, I'm sure the artwork's great, but here's the other thing. What if we have a new Picasso? You put it in my storefront, my storefront burns down. Who's going to take the liability that's forced upon me? Who's going to come in and put the artwork up? What happens if they fall while they're on my property and break their head open? Am I liable?
One minute.
Et cetera, et cetera. It's a very slippery slope. It's a very nice idea, but you need to come to me and knock on my door and say, hey, we're going to have 35 meetings. We'd like you to come to one of them. I don't always have time to check, and I understand that. I don't always have time to check the website. But I'd be happy to show up at any of these meetings. In fact, I volunteered for that committee. And people that don't live in this town can't stand here and talk.
30 seconds.
Thank you.
Will anybody else want to speak first? I just want to clarify, FinCom is recommending, right? Yeah, but they didn't make a motion, just recommend it. Okay, just want to be clear. Mr. McGrail, for the second time for two minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Efficiency.
We had the opportunity to hear from a property owner, and this is what I was referring to earlier. I don't think it's the intent. I think the intent is good. It's a good intent. But I think I'm concerned that the effect is unfortunately going to create an adversarial circumstance with the property owners. I can tell you, you heard that the property owners weren't invited to participate in the process. I represent four major property owners in the downtown area. They don't support it. They're mystified by it. They're upset by it. Should be an open process with them. We don't want to do that with the property owners. Let Envision, good things are happening downtown. Get everybody to participate in, everybody behind it. Get it done. See where we stand. And then if you have to revisit something like this, you can. But I think it is, as Heather said, a slippery slope that we should not go down at this point. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Second time.
Yep.
Two minutes.
Yep. Cindy Schatz, eight Cordis Street. I'd like to just elucidate, Mr. Lieber mentioned that many organizations were invited, but he didn't specify which ones. One of the organizations that was notified of the work on this bylaw was the Chamber of Commerce. And our thought was that by notifying the Chamber of Commerce and their notifying all their members, that we would be reaching a lot of the property owners in town. We did not hear back from any of them through that communication. We were hopeful, but we did put the word out there, so we were not ignoring the property owners.
Any further discussion? There being no further discussion, simple majority, correct, Mr. Mullen? The motion before you is that the town amend the general bylaws as described in Article 26 for the purposes of carrying out this article. All in favor? All opposed? Oh, we're going to count this. Tellers, where are you? Okay. You got the center? You two guys got the right? Dan, you and Julie got the left? Okay. All in favor, raise your hand. Keep your hand in the air until you're sure your vote has been counted. Just getting some backing. Nine, yes.
Nine in the south.
Nine in the south. Yeses, keep your hands up, you yeses there. Keep your hand, you guys got all down here?
17, Santa.
17 in the center. All opposed, raise your hand. Keep your hand in the air until you're sure you have been counted.
14 in the south.
14 in the south. 27. 26?
26.
Okay. What do you got? 45 in favor, 35, or 45 opposed, 35 in favor. Motion doesn't carry, correct? Which, which yes or no?
No, in the center. Was it 26 you said?
Yeah, 26, yeah. Yeah. Okay. Back to, back to Article 11. Dan, I'm going to give this to Betsy. Okay, just copy. Joey Conway, can't help myself. All right. Article 11, to create surplus equipment revol, to create surplus equipment revolving fund. To see if the town will vote to amend the table of revolving funds set forth in Chapter 5, Section 5 of the general bylaws by adding a line item for the surplus equipment revolving fund as set, the chart set forth in your program, or to see what the town will do about it. Mr. Conway.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. That the town amend the general bylaws as set forth in this article.
Second. Mr. Conway.
The purpose of this article is to amend Chapter 5, Section 5 of the general bylaws by adding a surplus equipment revolving fund. This revolving fund will allow the town to receive maximum value for surplus equipment and provides that funds received will be used in the replacement of equipment. Currently, when Public Works replaces equipment, the piece of equipment being replaced is traded in as part of the purchase. The values received through trading are generally lower than if the old equipment was sold as surplus equipment. A comparable example to this is a private party sale of your vehicle versus trading into the dealer. The surplus equipment revolving fund will allow DPW to sell surplus equipment to the highest bidder, and the funds will be used to reduce the cost of the replacement equipment being purchased. This approach will provide the town with the lowest possible replacement cost and allow the capital planning committee to reduce individual amounts appropriated when replacing equipment. The DPW recommends favorable action on this article.
FinCom.
The Finance Committee also encourages everybody to vote yes on this article.
Finance Committee also encourages everybody to vote yes on this article.
Any discussion? Any further discussion on the motion under Article 11? There being no further discussion, the motion that the town amend the general bylaws as set forth under Article 11. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Article 12, this is to set revolving fund limit for surplus equipment. To see if the town will vote to establish with respect to each of the following revolving funds, the following limits on the total amount that may be expended from each such fund in fiscal year 2020. Revolving fund surplus equipment maximum expenditure fifty thousand, or to see what the town will do about it. Mr. Conway.
That the town vote to establish a maximum expenditure of fifty thousand dollars for the surplus revolving fund for fiscal year 2020.
Your second. Thank you. Mr. Conway.
The purpose of this, the purpose of this article is to set the maximum allowable expenditure limit for revolving fund. The revolving fund limit is to be set for the surplus equipment revolving account. The maximum expenditure limit being set is fifty thousand dollars for fiscal year 2020. The maximum expenditure limit will be reauthorized each year and may decrease or increase depending on the equipment being replaced.
Mr. Sherman.
Finance Committee supports this article.
Discussion in the north.
Mark Luca, 359 Water Street. How many revolving accounts does the town have now?
Mr. Mayo, do you know that? Mr. Gill, do you know that?
Five.
Thank you.
On the town side, five.
What about the school?
Mr. Lyons, do you know? Wait, hold on, hold on. You got him, Chris? Chris, do you know? Five or six with the school committee, too.
Does anybody have an idea how much these total revolving accounts are worth at any given time?
Mr. Gill, ballpark?
I could give you an example. When DPW went through the budget process, we had town council declare a bunch of equipment and vehicles that were taking up space and were no longer needed as surplus equipment. And we've since taken these pieces of equipment out to these different markets to try to solicit, you know, the most amount of value for it. And currently, to date, in a very short period of time, we've been able to generate twenty-six thousand dollars that was essentially a zero if we didn't take this approach.
Thank you. My, my gut feeling is that there's probably more than ten revolving accounts in the town. And I'd like to know if anybody's checking these accounts to see what is going on, the ins and outs, and what's left for balances. My guess is it's not being done, and I think it should be. And I would guess that it's probably over two hundred thousand dollars in total balances. And I'd like to know whether the town is going to do anything to monitor these accounts, either through the FinCom or through the individual departments, and should there be something that shows up in an annual report?
Mr. Mayo, can you read, or either of you guys?
I'll take the second.
Okay.
I know that the town accountant looks at ours every year. And Kevin, they're in the financials? Yes, they're in our financials every year on the town side.
In the annual report?
I also know that the Finance Committee has asked, for example, the school department about their revolving accounts and the balances. And the answers we've received have been, well, it changes, you know, throughout the year. It can go all the way down to just a few dollars at one point when they spend quite a bit. And then income comes in, and it could be over a hundred thousand. But throughout the year, monies are coming and going, to the point that there is no set number. I can say that this is what's in the account because it moves a lot throughout the year.
I, I agree with you. I just, I just think that if there's a lot of money going in and out of these accounts, somebody should be overseeing what's going in and out, and to at least make a report that the public can see on the amount of dollars that's going in and out of those accounts. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article 12? Motion before you is that the town vote to establish a maximum expenditure of fifty thousand dollars for the surplus equipment revolving fund for the fiscal year 2020. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Article 13, which requires a two-thirds vote, Mr. Mullen? Correct? Thank you. To see if the town will vote to authorize the town council to accept or take by eminent domain proceedings, conveyances, or easements from time to time, giving the town the right to construct, maintain drains, sewers, water lines, retaining walls, streets, and to raise and appropriate a sufficient sum of money to carry out the purposes of this article, see what the town will do about it. Mr. Conway.
That the town authorize the town council to accept or take by eminent domain proceedings, conveyances, or easements from time to time, giving the town the right to construct and maintain drains, sewers, water lines, retaining walls and streets, and to provide, therefore, that the town raise and appropriate from tax levy the sum of one dollar to carry out the purpose of this article.
Your second. Mr. Sherman.
This is an annual article that allows the town council to accept and take land conveyances or easements to facilitate infrastructure improvements. This is something that we very rarely use, and we put out annually as more of a just-in-case security measure if the unknown comes up.
Mr. Sherman.
After, after great debate, it's really hard, but we decide to spend a dollar.
Any further discussion? Motion under Article 13, that the town authorize the town council to accept or take by eminent domain proceedings, conveyances, or easements from time to time, giving the town the right to construct and maintain drains, sewers, water lines, retaining walls and streets, to provide, therefore, that the town raise and appropriate the tax levy the sum of one dollar to carry out the purposes. All in favor? Is anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article 14, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate from tax levy, from tax levy or transfer from available funds, a sufficient sum of money for the collection, disposal, recycling, composting of refuse, or to see what the town will do about it. Mr. Conway.
That the town raise and appropriate from tax levy the sum of one million, nine hundred ninety-six thousand dollars to carry out the purpose of this article.
Your second. Thank you. Mr. Conway.
The Department of Public Works is requesting one million, nine hundred ninety-six thousand dollars for the collection and disposal of refuse, recycling, CRT TVs, white goods, our yard waste program, hazardous waste day, and miscellaneous items associated with the maintenance of the Nahand Street Yard Waste Site. This article has increased one hundred ninety-eight thousand dollars from fiscal year 2019. The primary reason for these increases are the following. Contractual cost increases for refuse collection, which is up a hundred and forty-five thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars. Contractual cost increases associated with our refuse disposal contract and recycling collection contract totaling twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars, and added costs of twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars related to operating the Nahand Street Yard Waste Site. Our refuse tonnages average seventy-two hundred tons per year, and our recycling tonnage is approximately twenty-two hundred tons per year. Our refuse tonnage is still substantially lower than fiscal year 2014 amount of eight thousand, four hundred and thirty tons. And our recycling tonnage has increased approximately five hundred to seven hundred tons from fiscal year 14. It is important to note that our refuse tonnage in fiscal year 2006 was ten thousand, five hundred tons, and prior to 2006 was over eleven thousand tons. Presently, recycling is in an unfortunate place for many communities across the country. In Massachusetts, many communities are paying large tipping fees for the processing of recycling and frequently, frequently subject to fines for contaminated recycling. It should be noted that currently Wakefield is not impacted by either of these two situations. Public Works asks all residents to support a recycling program by recycling as much clean recycling as possible. Increasing recycling and reducing refuse saves the town dollars that can be utilized for other town needs. It is extremely important that we all do our part and make sure that we are following the recycling rules and that all recycling is clean. Your participation and support will ensure that our costs are lowered, we protect the environment, and that we are able to provide sustainable service for the future. The DPW would like to thank residents for their dedication towards improving our environment. However, we cannot do it alone. Please remember, reduce, reuse, recycle. Let's keep Wakefield a cleaner, greener community. It is recommended that one million, nine hundred ninety-six thousand dollars be appropriated from tax levy for the purpose of this article.
Mr. Sherman.
The Finance Committee voted in favor of this article.
Any discussion on the motion? Mr. Scott. Mr. Scott the Younger. Well, Jimmy, I hope Jimmy hears me.
Peter Scott the Younger. Twenty-five Abon Street. There have been articles in the newspapers about China, where most of the recycling apparently goes to, is starting to refuse to take the stuff for various reasons. I would like to know if this is, in fact, impacting us, or do we expect it to impact us? And what is the likely future for us in the recycling area? It's very important, obviously.
Joe?
It's no secret that places like China and India, through their industrialization, have obviously been taking more of our recycled goods into their countries. And it is true that they are starting to sanction things and cut down on the intake on their end for certain things like that. It certainly will affect us to a point. Our vendors will have a harder time finding sources to offload the material appropriately, some of them even sitting on it for longer periods of time, which unfortunately may or may not increase with costs. We are in our recycling contract until 2021. So for the time being, we have two solid years to come up with a plan to be able to prepare for that. What it'll take is Public Works and different agencies through town. The advisory Public Works is the solid waste advisory committee. So we'll have to put together a game plan to pay attention to these markets so that we can react to any shifts that may occur.
Can we look forward to upgrading the recycling program to have the same barrels that we use for the regular refuse?
We could. It has not been the approach of Public Works to this point. Any bit of recycling that gets picked up by a recycling contractor is, is one container less that goes to the incinerator. So there's actually a cost savings for us for that. Right now, we have the fortune of not having to limit that. So we'll encourage.
If I may, what I'm talking about, what I'm talking about is the household garbage goes out in a blue barrel with a lid on it. It gets picked up and put in the truck.
Yes.
Other towns have a similar thing for recycling.
Hmm.
Goes like this. You don't carry out a mishmash of boxes and so forth and so on. Why don't we have that?
Presently, our recycling contract, the way it's worked out with the contractors, for you to use any, any vessel that you can get the recycling to the curb, they'll accept. But going forward, if it's something that makes it easier for the residents, we would certainly consider all of those options.
I hope so. Would be a nice improvement. Thank you.
You're welcome.
In the south.
Test. Nicholas Philbrook, 32 Cedars Street. I walk to the train every morning down Chestnut, I see so much trash in the recycling. Pizza boxes and like cardboard sitting out, and it's pouring down rain. And I just know that's going to get thrown out, you know? So I was wondering if there's anything in the budget for outreach, because I know we try and try, but like people still just don't get a lot of the messages. When you said that we haven't been fined for contamination, that just blew my mind. So that's good that it's getting diverted at the right points or whatever. And also, I agree with the, about the barrels. That'd be great.
To answer that really quickly, I think education and outreach is probably the most important piece to this whole thing. It's advantageous for us to get the word out there as much as we can. And it's something that we certainly look forward to doing more of in the future. But I'll say, any event that's held in the common, Wakefield 101, or anybody that interacts with us at our office, we certainly make sure we get the message out there to recycle as much as absolutely possible.
Laurie Hunt.
Laurie Hunt, One Terrace Court. I'm wondering if you know how much it would cost to increase our recycling pickup to weekly, and if that's something that you have thought about or could think about going forward?
Presently, right now, for just the collection of recycling, the increase would be three hundred and five thousand, nine hundred and sixty-three dollars. The last time that that contract went out, the vendors that put in RFPs to be considered for business estimated that we would see an increase between three and twenty percent. Even if we saw an increase of twenty percent in recycling, your cost savings from avoiding the incinerator would be about thirty thousand dollars. But it would still take that three hundred thousand dollar investment to get that. So you net out an addition of two hundred and seventy. So it's been our approach to balance both the financial responsibility and the sustainable responsibility to not limit anybody with their recycling, but choose bi-weekly pickup.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Julie Smith Galvin, 28 Grafton Street. I think these are all really good questions and definitely things that I know on the council we are thinking about. I just wanted to make people aware that we did, the council did institute an environmental sustainability committee a couple of months ago. We're only on our second meeting. But this is an item that we fully intend to take up. The recycling contract's going to be renegotiated in two years, as Mr. Conway said. And we're looking at things like perhaps better use of the pit, different schedules, different ways to do recycling, rubbish pickup as well as composting. So I encourage everybody to kind of pay attention to what's happening with the environmental sustainability committee and give some input on this. Thank you.
In the north.
I have a bit of a newbie town council que- I mean, town meeting question, which is, would somebody explain what a tax levy is?
Yeah, what's your name?
Oh, sorry. My name is Benny Wheat. I live at 44 Miriam.
Okay. Mr. Mayo, do you want to explain that?
Well, it's kind of, it means it's out of our normal tax collection. So it's not borrowing. It's just out of our normal tax collections, your real estate tax, any other taxes that we collect. So part of our regular intake of funds and then put out.
And so what's the difference between that and a town department that has a budget that then spends that budget?
Okay. There are certain, it, it's really no difference. It all comes out of the same place. There are certain items that we may choose to do in an article versus into a budget. And we go back and forth. We've moved items in the past that were in articles to the budget. And I've thought a lot about the trash article, and I've spoken with the DPW director and members of the town council. I kind of like having this as an article because it really has some focus on it, because this is a big, a big expense and something that we need to focus on. If it got buried in the DPW budget, which is about six million, might not get as much, you know, highlighting. So, but that's something that the town council and we will be talking about in the Finance Committee.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? There being no further discussion, the motion before you is that the town raise and appropriate from the tax levy the sum of one million, nine hundred ninety-six thousand dollars to carry out the purposes of this article. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Article 15. Okay, Article 15. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sum of money for roadway improvements, or to see what the town will do about it. Mr. Conway.
That the town raise and appropriate from tax levy the sum of five hundred thousand dollars to carry out the purpose of this article.
Ladies and gentlemen, if I may, introduce Town Engineer William Renaud. He came and joined us this summer. He's been doing a tremendous amount of work on this subject. I found it only appropriate that he comes up here and gives you comments on this subject matter.
Mr. Renaud.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article 15 requests five hundred thousand dollars to fund the rehabilitation of the town's ninety-mile public roadway network. Public Works utilizes a new roads program software in conjunction with a town-wide pavement condition inventory to plan, prior, plan and prioritize roadway rehabilitation projects. Under roadway rehabilitation projects. Underground utility improvements to sewer, water, drain, and gas are closely coordinated with our planned paving projects to minimize future utility cuts into newly installed pavement. Our software analysis has determined that a minimum investment of $2 million in pavement reconstruction is required to maintain the current roadway network condition. When combined with the town's Chapter 90 state aid allotment, this article will provide only $1.2 million in total roadway reconstruction funding for fiscal '20. That's approximately a $600,000 shortfall when compared to the recommended minimum investment. Should be noted that improvements to the town's overall roadway condition would require funding well above what is being requested in this article. Public Works respectfully requests your support of Article 15.
Mr. Sherman?
The Finance Committee moves to amend Article 15, changing $500,000 to $750,000.
Do you have that in writing?
You got it?
Okay, you have it in writing? Okay. Is there a second? Okay, Mr. Sherman, your, thank you.
Like last year, the Finance Committee is really concerned about how much we're spending on our roads. It was clear, it was not a unanimous vote, but it was a, I believe, 11-3 vote that said we need to spend more on our roads. There are so many potholes. Everybody knows it's a mess. As Mr. Conway, or I should say, Mr. Renaud, who just discussed, we need to spend more than we are. And so the Finance Committee recommends increasing this article to $750,000.
Okay, the discussion now is on the motion, okay? So you don't have to be overly repetitive. If you want to increase it from five, if you want to increase it by $250,000, try and keep your remarks limited to that for the purpose of this motion. Did you want to get up? Not necessarily. Peter, Peter, like, what do you want me to, okay. Let's make a decision. Not necessarily, okay?
I don't want to be repetitive. Peter May, 12 Garden Lane.
Don't worry about it. We're a town meeting.
Thanks very much, Bill. As we mentioned in the campaign a number of times, there's a balancing act, as Steve Mayer would say. We have a certain amount of money, and 750, to me, is a minimum. So I concur with the Finance Committee recommendation. And again, that's a minimum. So if someone wants to make another amendment to go to eight, Bill will help you.
First you didn't know where you want to get up.
750, 750 is what I recommend as well with the Finance Committee.
Okay, anybody get 800? 800, I got 800 here, I got 800. I got 900, 900. What do you think this is? I knew. In the north?
Hi, Phil Renzi, 8 Morgan Ave. Can you just clarify again, the engineer, I forget your first name, sorry. How much are we short? Did you say we're 600,000 short, what the projection is for this year?
Mr. Renaud?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Yes, we are. So, yeah, our minimum investment to maintain our current condition, our roadway current condition, is about $2 million a year. That gives us about six miles of roadway reconstruction. With this amendment, we're at 1.4 now. So that would be about a $600,000 shortfall.
1.4?
Yeah, 1.4 with the amendment.
Is that enough?
Well, it's still a shortfall, so.
How much do you need to get it up to not shortfall? Like even out?
To even out, we're looking at about $2 million is what we would need to maintain the current condition.
Right.
So if we wanted to improve the roadway, we would need to be above $2 million total.
And the amendment's for 750?
Our amendment's for 750, but we also get about $675,000 in state aid. So we have to combine that to get our 2 million.
Thank you.
Mr. Dombrowski and Mr. Chines?
Good evening. I'm Edward Dombrowski, 15 Chestnut Street. And I had the opportunity actually recently to sit down with Mr. Conway and Mr. Renaud to talk about this, because I know this has been an issue that a lot of us have been concerned about for a long time. But we're kind of throwing numbers out, and we don't really have a plan. And that's part of the challenge, I think, with this. We need to have a more systematic approach to this. We have to have a plan going forward. We are running a deficit. If we approve 750, if we approve a million, if we approve a million and five, we're running a deficit. And so I think it's important for us as a town to recognize that we need to change the way we're doing this. And I hope that by fall town meeting, we'll have the opportunity to work more collaboratively with DPW to figure out how we can structure this in a way so that we have a meaningful discussion about not just making sure that we're maintaining what we have, but also repairing what needs to be repaired. It's really quite eye-opening. When you look at the level of disrepair that a road has and the costs associated with it, if you have a road that is, say, you know, just very basic surface repairs, it's far less expensive. If you have to dig up the road and start anew, it's about two and a half times the cost. And so while we're talking about numbers here tonight, and that's important, it's very clear that by increasing the number, we're looking to try to improve the situation with our roads. Understand that we go from about $14 to about $40, depending on the extent of repair and/or replacement that's required. So we get a lot more bang for our buck if we're smart about the way that we do this. We don't want to get our roads to the point where they require the $40 option. We want to maintain them so that they're at the six or the $14 option. And, you know, I don't want to talk out of turn, because DPW can speak, you know, far more eloquently on this issue. But I think that for purposes of tonight, it's reasonable to look at an increase of 750. But understanding that going forward, I think part of the charge of town council in the next few months, so that we're prepared for all of you come fall town meeting, is to have a systematic approach. This is going to be a multi-year approach. It probably will involve bonding, because we can't kind of haphazardly do this. We can't keep putting these Band-Aids on these very large open wounds that we know that we have within the town. And delaying it, or not funding it at proper levels, is just ultimately going to cost us more money. Because the roads aren't going anywhere. They're going to continue to deteriorate. And as long as we continue to be behind, you know, in our maintenance, much less our repair and our improvements, it's going to become a more and more costly proposition for all of us. And so I think for purposes of this evening, the 750 is reasonable. But again, that's a number we're all kind of picking out. We know it's, we know we're underfunding with that. But having a systematic, multi-year approach, and we're probably talking, looking over a five to 10-year period, and projecting out what we need, and probably having to bond, looking at bonding for that, that's something that I think is appropriate at fall town meeting to address the concerns that we have here. There's a cost to inaction, and that cost is about two and a half times what it would be if we can, if we can keep things maintained at a more reasonable level. Thank you.
Mr. Chines?
Hi there. Jonathan Chines, 34 Hopkins Street. Wholeheartedly agree with Councilor Dombrowski about the need for a long-term plan. I would say that plan should include the prioritization of what we're looking at, which certainly the software tools that we have within DPW help with that, the funding mechanism, but also trying to think creatively, are there different ways in which we can approach the problem? How do we tie the work that we're doing to other projects that are happening in towns that we're leveraging our funds effectively? With all of that said, the $750,000 isn't entirely picked out of thin air, at least when we talked about it when I had the privilege of serving on Finance Committee. It was intended to be a step towards the right level of investment over the long term, just as the recommendation from the Finance Committee last year to go from what had been recommended by town council to the 500,000 that we voted here on at town meeting was also a step in that direction. We know regardless of what the long-term plan is, that the investment of $750,000 this year will be money that is well spent. It will be money that helps us put, you know, a slightly larger dent in the problem that we had before. And so I encourage people here tonight to vote for the amendment and for the article at 750,000. Thank you.
Mr. Scott?
Peter Scott, 25 Avon Street. I had originally expected to speak more forcefully about this issue, but I'm very relieved to see that the city council or town council is appearing to scramble hard to catch up with this and recognizes that there's a problem. It's surprising that it hasn't been addressed earlier, but it's great to see that we're gonna get things going the right way going forward. I understand that the request for budget originally was a million dollars. Did I say that right? Yes, a million dollars. And it is a pity that we no longer have a DPW board who might have properly gone to bat for that, instead of having us argue back and forth between 500 and 750. I have a question concerning one specific area, though. Main Street along the side of the lake right now is absolutely unbelievable. You get your teeth jarred loose driving along there. We started making the detour to go from our house to 128 using North Avenue only because of that. That, as I recall, is not a piece of roadway that we maintain. I believe the state, or is that either state or federal, because it's part of Route 129.
Joe, do you know that?
No, unfortunately, we wish you were right. No, we do maintain it.
We do maintain it.
Yes.
Please put that at the top of the list, boys. Thanks a lot.
Any further discussion? Because the motion that was made is for a greater amount, if that passes, that will be, that's it. That's what will happen, okay? Mr. Mullen, correct? Thank you. All in favor of the amended motion that the town raise and appropriate from the tax levy the sum of $750,000 to carry out the purposes of this article? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Article 16, sidewalks. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sufficient sum of money for construction of new sidewalks, or to see what the town will do about it. Mr. Conway?
That the town raise and appropriate from tax levy the sum of $125,000 to carry out the purpose of this article.
Is there a second? Mr. Conway?
This article is requesting $125,000 for the purpose of installing new sidewalks. The town funded new sidewalk installation from fiscal year 1995 to 2002, and from fiscal years 2013 through 2019. The last funding amount appropriated was $100,000 in fiscal year 2019. The funds appropriated for this request provide for approximately a half mile of new sidewalk. The areas being reviewed have multiple broken section of sidewalk. North Avenue, Elm Street, Cedar Street, Greenwood Ave., and Parker Road are all on Public Works radar. This request, the request of this warrant article is to provide $125,000 of brand-new sidewalks installed.
Mr. Sherman?
Finance Committee recommends favorable action.
Any discussion about the sidewalk repair? There being no discussion, a motion before you that the town raise and appropriate from the tax levy the sum of $125,000 to carry out the purposes of this article? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Article 17, which will require a two-thirds vote, reads, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate from tax levy or transfer from available funds or by borrowing, a sufficient sum of money for critical safety, health, environmental repairs of the Public Works facility located at 35 North Ave.," to see what the town will do about it. Mr. Conway?
"That the town of Wakefield appropriate the sum of $500,000 for critical safety, health, and environmental repairs to the Public Works facility located at 35 North Avenue, including the payment of costs incidental or related thereto. And to meet said appropriation, the treasurer, with approval of the town council, is authorized to borrow said sum under and pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7 of the general laws, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds therefore. Any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 20, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount."
Is there a second? Mr. Conway?
"This article is requesting the borrowing of $500,000 for the purpose of performing critical safety and environmental upgrades to the existing Public Works facility located at our North Avenue facility. Over the years, Public Works has received very little funding to maintain and improve North Avenue facility. The lack of funding has resulted in unsafe conditions, some of which include a floor drainage system that has collapsed, uneven floor lifting around vehicle lifts, water leakage between walls creating mold conditions, floor settlement in the 1972 garage facility causing damage to equipment when exiting the facility, fumes entering the offices and employee area, and hoisting equipment that needs to be re-supported and structurally cured. It is estimated that there is $10 million-plus dollars in immediate needs at the facility. This figure would not correct operational issues, all structural issues, circulation and air quality issues, and/or spatial issues. The $500,000 requested is necessary to meet the immediate safety need for the staff and may not be sufficient to complete all the critical and safety environmental needs. It is recommended that $500,000 be appropriated by borrowing for the purpose of this article."
Mr. Sherman?
Finance Committee unanimously supports this article.
Any discussion? There being no discussion, the motion before you is that the town of Wakefield appropriate the sum of 500,000 for critical safety, health, and environmental repairs to the Public Works facility located at 35 North Ave., including the payment of costs incidental or related thereto. And to meet said appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the town council, is authorized to borrow said sum under and pursuant to general laws, Chapter 44, Section 7 of the general laws, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds therefore. Any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium apply to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by the note in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, 44, Section 20, thereby reducing the amount authorized to borrow to pay such costs. This requires a two-thirds vote. All in favor? All opposed? Anyone opposed that I'm missing? Shout out? No? That motion carries unanimously. Article 18. "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate from tax levy or transfer by available funds or by borrowing, a sufficient sum of money to conduct a public works feasibility study or to see what the town will do about it." Can I ask you a question, Mr. Mullen? Why isn't this two-thirds? It says, it says borrowing, but you're not gonna. Okay, okay, that's, so that's the answer. Mr. Conway, your motion, which does not include borrowing?
"That the town raise and appropriate from tax levy the sum of $100,000 to carry out the purpose of this article."
Is there a second? Thank you. Mr. Conway?
"This article is requesting $100,000 for the purpose of performing a facility improvement, replacement, feasibility study of the North Avenue Public Works facility. The North Avenue Public Works facilities are in desperate need of rebuilding and modernization. The use of the North Avenue facility by the Highway Division predates 1937, or as Mr. Stinson would say, the horse and buggy days. Over the years, there have been two additions performed at the site, one in 1947 and one in 1972. There's been no major funding for maintaining or improving the facility since 1972, even though Public Works has taken on more responsibilities through the years. Prior to 2015, the DPW began highlighting the issues associated with the current facility through discussions at various meetings, capital outlay requests, reports prepared in 2015, 16, and 17, tours with elected officials, the Advisory Board of Public Works, Finance Committee, and some members of the Permanent Building Committee. We are now at the critical need stage and must address the critical town facilities. In 1937, the facility housed the Highway Division. Today, that facility not only houses the Highway Division, it also houses Fleet, Parks, and the Forestry Division. Additionally, the facilities housed our Buildings Division shop, provide a vehicle fueling facility for all town vehicles, the Fleet Maintenance Shop that maintains all Public Works, police, council on aging, and miscellaneous vehicles. It is important to note that in the early 2000s, the DPW began maintaining the infrastructure for all town fields and grounds. Infrastructure maintenance on all town buildings, such as the schools, Civic Center, Council on Aging, Albion Street Cultural Exchange, excuse me, larger, more complex facilities such as Public Safety Building, the Galvin, Woodville, Dahlberg Schools. We've also taken on snow and ice responsibilities for all of these town facilities, just to name a few. The issues at the facility are numerous and include environmental issues and deficiencies. Safety and employee health concerns, lack of space to properly work on projects and have equipment properly stored in mechanic space, overcrowding due to added staffing at the facility, lack of ADA compliance due to existing space facility and layout, and lack of equipment and general storage space. Unsafe vehicle circulation meeting current... lack of equipment and general storage space, unsafe vehicle circulation meeting current building codes, lack of proper clearances for operation, lack of fire protection to properly protect the staff and equipment, is just a few of our issues. Other operational issues include the setup and size of the facility, which is promoting inefficient and costly operations. DPW's 11 divisions use seven locations to run their daily operation, inefficient energy usage, equipment left outside, reducing service life, and additional damage subject to that equipment being outside is also a consideration. Work performed outside during darkness and in poor weather results in increased injuries and added employee costs, slows emergency response time, and lowers morale, and eventually affects production. Lack of trade shops for work performed is costly due to outsourcing, and the lack of facilities such as a paint shop and other critical needs, to name a few. In summation, the current facilities do not provide a safe work environment for the staff, visitors, contractors, or vendors. It does also not meet current codes, provides inefficient and costly operation, and prevents the DPW from efficiently and cost-effectively meeting the demands of the community.
Mr. Sherman.
Finance Committee recommends favorable action on this article.
Mr. Scott.
The older Mr. Scott.
I didn't say that. I said he was the younger. You are the Mr. Scott, all right?
Okay, thank you. Jim Scott, 75 Elm Street. You know, we just voted $500,000 to correct a lot of situations in the Public Works building. I think spending $100,000 for a study at this time is really not the right thing to do. I think we ought to put that off. For your $100,000, a good piece of change, and see what we get for the $500,000. We don't need a Cadillac for a Public Works building. It'd be nice to have it. But I think we could save $100,000 and see how we make out with the $500,000 going in it, so that's my feeling.
Is there a question to Mr. Conway?
Well, I don't think we should spend it, so I'm against the $100,000, so let's have a discussion.
Okay.
It sounds like you need more space. So would this $100,000 be looking for a new parcel for Public Works, or are you going to rebuild at the same spot?
Unfortunately, given the current state of build-out in Wakefield, this $100,000 would be trying to maximize the existing space with a new facility on-site.
The list you just read off just sounds like you need a lot more space than what's able to be done at that spot. It almost seems like you need to find a new place for the entire facility and rebuild it someplace else.
In a perfect world, yes. It would require some acreage to get the facility that's probably most efficient and effective. This $100,000 would provide a study, and we'd probably have to look at having a multi-level building to be able to get everything stacked rather than spread out horizontally.
All right, but you are planning on doing it at that site?
Correct. The purpose of this article, yes.
All right. Is this going to look into environmental concerns at that area, too? Because I know there are some issues with contamination around there.
Absolutely. The primary concern right now is we have a sinking floor that is not level. Currently, our Fleet Maintenance Division services 147 vehicles. If we were to be inspected by OSHA, which we now fall under now, and get shut down, we would not be able to service those vehicles at that site. That includes every single piece of earth-moving equipment currently owned by Public Works, as well as every police cruiser that's out on the road right now. So we're going to go with the most serious priorities first, and then work our way through it, but environmental concerns are certainly something that we hope to tackle.
All right, thank you.
Any further discussion? Motion before you is that the town raise and appropriate from the tax levy the sum of $100,000 to carry out the purposes of this article? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. This is two-thirds, Mr. Mullen, correct? Okay. "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate from tax levy by transfer from available funds or by borrowing a sufficient sum of money to make repairs to the town's drainage system located on or near Grafton Street, Harrison Ave., Maple Street, including the design renovation, upgrading, and reconstruction of the culvert located there, to see what the town will do about it." Mr. Renaud.
That the town appropriate the sum of $1.35 million to make repairs to the public drainage system located on or near Grafton Street, Harrison Avenue, and Maple Street, including the design renovation, upgrading, and reconstruction of the culvert located there, and to fund such appropriation that the town authorize, the town treasurer, with the approval of the town council, to borrow said sum pursuant to general laws, Chapter 44, Sections 7 and 8, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town, therefore, any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of cost approved by this vote in accordance with general laws, Chapter 44, Section 20.
Is there a second? Thank you. Mr. Renaud.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article 19 requests the borrowing of $1.35 million for the purpose of improving the drainage system at Grafton Street, Harrison Avenue, and Maple Street. This project was identified as a priority project within a townwide drainage study that was completed in April of 2016. The drainage system and conveyance channels in this area are undersized, flooding private property, and overtopping Grafton Street and Harrison Ave. routinely. Through a consultant, Public Works conducted an alternative analysis where three possible projects were considered. The recommended alternative proposes to increase the size of the existing culvert pipe within Grafton Street, as well as to install a new overflow drainage pipe within Maple Avenue. It should be noted that the drainage model developed for this project has shown that the proposed improvements will work up to the 10-year design storm, which is about a five-inch rain event. Larger and less frequent storms are still expected to have impact to the area even after the project is completed. Public Works respectfully requests your support of Article 19 to provide $1.35 million to be appropriated by borrowing for the purpose of this article.
Finance Committee voted in favor of this article.
Yeah, come on down. Thank you, Mr. Mayo. You're getting close.
I'm Bernice Kelly from 38 Grafton Street. I have a lot to say.
Less than five minutes, though.
Okay.[1093.42][1093.42](laughing) I've been there since the summer of 1953. 1953. In the fall of 1953, they decided to make Grafton Street a thruway to Harrison Avenue, and they had to do something about the brook, which they had to contain it. It was free-running. So they put in a culvert, a pipe, and went through people's property, but they put in too small a pipe, and that was shown by the study, which was done in 19...what, 85, 95?
2016.
So we've had flooding of our basements. I've had 29 inches and a half of water in my basement that's come down the street because it goes, it's too much for the pipe. The pipe isn't big enough. But they've, and now they've put in a screen, which does help, but they don't keep the screen clean. It leaves on both sides and in half of the front, and they've got to fix it. That's all there is about it. So I hope they'll do it. Thank you.
Any further discussion? There being no further discussion, the motion under Article 19 is that the town appropriate the sum of $1,350,000 to make repairs to the public drainage system located on or near Grafton Street, Harrison Ave., Maple Street, including the design renovation, upgrading, and reconstruction of the culvert located there, and to fund such appropriation that the town authorize, the town treasurer, with the approval of town council, to borrow said sum pursuant to general laws, Chapter 44, Section 7, or 8, any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds, to issue bonds or notes, the town provided that any premium received by the town upon sale of such bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote, and in accordance with general laws, Chapter 44, Section 20. Two-thirds majority required. All in favor? All opposed? Anyone opposed? This Article 18 is unanimous. Article, oh, 19, I'm sorry. Article 20, we're moving so fast. Article 20, "To see if the town will vote, will vote to transfer from the Water Surplus Reserve account a sufficient sum of money for replacing and/or replenishing the filter sand at the water treatment facility on Broadway, to see what the town will do about it." Mr. Renaud, oh, Mr. Conway, okay. Mr. Conway.
That the town transfer from the Water Surplus Reserve account the sum of $125,000 to carry out the purpose of this article.
Mr. Conway.
This article is requesting $125,000 for the purpose of replenishing and replacing sand in the slow sand filters at the Broadway Water Treatment Facility. The sand in the filters needs to be replenished or replaced every 10 years. With proper maintenance, the replenishing and replacement timeframe can be extended. The last time the sand was replenished and/or replaced was in fiscal year 2005, or approximately 14 years ago. The added time is a result of the outstanding work performed by the DPW's Water and Sewer Division in maintaining this system. Slow sand filters produce high-quality water without the use of some chemical aids. Passing flocculated water through a gravity sand filter strains out the flock and particles, reducing bacteria and removing most solids. Additionally, slow sand filters effectively removes turbidity and pathogenic organisms. Slow sand filtration is an excellent filtration system and provides high-quality treated water. It is recommended that $125,000 from Water Reserve be appropriated for the purpose of this article.
Mr. Sherman.
Finance Committee approves this article.
There being no discussion, the motion before you is that the town transfer from the Water Surplus Reserve account the sum of $125,000 to carry out the purposes of this article? All in favor? All opposed? Article 21. "To see if the town will vote to appropriate a sufficient sum of money to make repairs to a portion of Flanders Lane, a private way in the town, in accordance with the provisions of general laws, Chapter 80 of Section 175-10 of the Code of the Town, otherwise, and to determine whether to fund the appropriation by borrowing or otherwise, over what period of time to assess betterments, and the further to see if the town will hear and act upon a report from the town council in laying out a townway in substantially the same location as a private way described below." And the remainder is the description as set forth in your program. Mr. Renaud.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Public Works recommends that the town raise or appropriate the sum of $68,000 to make repairs to the portion of Flanders Lane described in this article, such repairs being required by public necessity and convenience. That betterments be assessed to the property owners benefited thereby over a period of 20 years, all such assessments to be equal in amount regardless of the owner's frontage, and further that the town authorize the town council to accept by grant or deed, or to take by eminent domain proceedings, rights, and permanent easements necessary for the reconstruction and maintenance of the private way portion of Flanders Lane as a public way as described in this article.
Mr. Renaud.
Article 21 requests the town appropriate $68,000 for roadway improvements to the private portion of Flanders Lane between Hancock Road and Plissam Street. In 2018, the town received a petition for assistance in making repairs to Flanders Lane in accordance with Chapter 175-10 of the Town Code. The four rebuttors to the private portion of Flanders Lane will assume the cost of all repairs within the betterment being equally shared among all four rebuttors. This article provides for the option of repayment to the town over a 20-year period instead of the five years provided in Chapter 175-10 of the Town Code. This article also requests the acceptance of Flanders Lane as a public way. It's important to note that the remaining portion of Flanders Lane from Cordis Street to Hancock Road has already been accepted. The proposed improvements to the roadway will match the cross-section of the accepted portion of the road. Public Works respectfully requests affirmative action on Article 21.
Mr. Sherman.
Finance Committee also recommends favorable action on this article.
Any discussion on the motion under Article 21? Oh, I'm sorry, Planning Board, which, oh, yes, in my program. There you go.
The Planning Board also recommends favorable action.
Any discussion? There being no discussion, the motion is that the town raise and appropriate the sum of $68,000 to make repairs to portion of Flanders Lane as described in this article. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Good job, guys. Joe Conway, an impressive debut. Making me feel awfully old. When did you get so articulate? All right, over to 23 now, since we've disposed of 22. Yes.
Was that a part of a borrowing?
No, it wasn't. That's why, it would have been two-thirds. That's, yeah. It's just a straight tax levy transfer. You're welcome. Article 23. "To see if the town will vote to amend the general bylaws by adding the following subsection to Section 1.5 of the Code of the Town entitled 'Word Usage,' H.A.' Business Day shall mean when the town hall or facility used for substantially the same purpose is open for normal business, or to see what the town will do about it." Mr. Lieber.
Move that the town amend the general bylaws as set forth in this article.
Is there a second? Mr. Lieber.
Thank you. First, very briefly, just to explain a little bit about the Bylaws Review Committee, what we have been up to over the course of the last two and a half years. It's a five-year cycle. The bylaws had not been fully vetted at a very high-degree level of expertise for many years, and ultimately, there were eight members of the public who decided to dedicate a lot of time, and I can't stress enough how much time the volunteers really put into this. Forty-five meetings over 30 months, that they came together, and through that process, we came up with approximately 60 different changes, most of which have been adopted by this body and subsequently approved by the state. We solicited input from many different reference town departments, councils, boards, committees, members of the public, interested parties. We tried to solicit input from as many different places as possible. We had five separate topics for this meeting. We've already, obviously, disposed of one of them. The goal behind the Bylaw Review Committee in this particular iteration of the eight people who were a member of it was very specific. It was to go through the general bylaws of the town, literally word by word, comma by comma, period by period, figure out where the commas should be, where they shouldn't be, and a lot of jokes that would happen in meetings, a lot of English that would happen. And the idea was to make the bylaws as clear as possible and as effective as possible, making as few substantive changes, and when there were substantive changes, making those as separate articles, so that, as we've already discussed here and will continue discussing, the town will understand what the changes are so that we can determine what is in the best interest of the town itself. There's a process that we'll get to pick up again in a few years, but the committee itself has really done yeoman's work in trying to work together, and we'll go over who the members of the committee are in just a few minutes. But for this particular article, the purpose of this article is to actually pick up something that was actually just changed in our charter. At the election that happened last week, one of the things that was changed, that was approved by as part of Article, or Question 1, was the removal of the definition of Business Day from the charter itself. Anticipating, the Bylaw Reviews Committee actually went ahead and added this article to the warrant, so we were reintroducing the term Business Day back into the bylaws. So it's an amendment to the, to the Chapter 1, specifically so that we can go ahead and have the definition of Business Day as it was actually previously specified in the charter itself. It does not actually make any substantive changes to the intent of it. It's really any day that the town hall is open for regular business.
Any discussion? There being no discussion, Article 23, "That the town amend the general bylaws as described, carry out the purposes of this article." All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Article 24, "To see if the town will vote to delete the text of Section 910 of the general bylaws entitled 'Advisory Committee,' and replace it with the following: Whenever the town undertakes a building project that comes within the jurisdiction of the Permanent Building Committee, Advisory Committee shall be appointed for the purpose of advising the Permanent Building Committee concerning the project." The Advisory The Advisory Committee shall prepare and make presentation to the Building Committee concerning such matters as, as the Advisory Committee deems appropriate when relevant. Okay? And then it goes on to define what would be relevant and what other agents, town agencies would be involved. It's in your program. Mr. Lieber?
Thank you. Article twenty-four.
Oh, you gotta make a motion.
That the, that the town amend the general bylaws as set forth in this article.
Okay. Second? Now you're off.
Thank you. The purpose of Article twenty-four is to reconstitute the Building Committee Advisory Committee. At this body last year, the, the town meeting decided not to change the composition of the Permanent Building Committee itself. We absolutely respected that, and one of the things that came out of this body, as well as, again, the vote last week with the change of a moderator, is that the Permanent Building Committee Advisory Committee was not actually always adhered to. In fact, there was only one project that the Permanent Building Committee could attest to that had an actual advisory committee as required under Chapter nine, Section ten of the current bylaws. So to correct that, as well as bring the user agency, the agency responsible for the building, whether that be a school building, a library building, building for Public Works, public safety building, that the actual users have direct input into the advisory committee. The advisory committee then just provides advice for the Permanent Building Committee itself. This provides a way so that that, that actual advice can flow through in a structured manner without actually constituting a change to the Permanent Building Committee itself. So it preserves the value of having consistency on the Permanent Building Committee. It also ensures that the user agency and members of the public always have the ability to have input at a advisory committee meeting, which is in itself a, a public body. In addition, it changes who is, who is actually a member of that public body from, right now, being appointed by the moderator, to the actual user agency itself. So the school committee, in the event, we have a school building, we can hope that there will be some, at some point in the future, then the school committee will appoint for that. If there ends up being another library renovation or another library built, the Library Board of Trustees would handle that. In the case of a public safety building, or even tonight, we just approved Articles seventeen and eighteen. Once those get codified, then we will actually have facilities for the Department of Public Works. The town council would then, then appoint the advisory committee members, so that we actually would have an advisory committee. People from the public have a place that they can actually give direct input that will always be guaranteed to go to the public, to the public Permanent Building Committee, so that, that those particular pieces can be heard. And we worked directly with Permanent Building Committee in crafting this. One of the suggestions that was made, that was adopted, was that we make a cap so that the advisory committee did not get completely unwieldy in size, and so the, after discussions, we put an absolute maximum of twenty-five. The actual number is up to the board that's doing the pointing. If they determine they only need seven members, that's fine. If they choose, there should be thirteen, they can as well. That number was actually derived from the actual number of members that were required, that were appointed by the school committee to hires, to do the review for superintendent resumes. So that's where, where we came up. That was actually at twenty-one, last time they actually met, and so we went ahead and said for a school, we likely would have a lot of different constituents, but there's no requirement that there be that many. It's just a cap, so you don't get a committee of thirty-five people, of fifty-one people, something along those lines. So the purpose behind this, and this language was drafted by Town Council Mullen, is very specific to, so that it keeps the Permanent Building Committee as responsible for the ultimate project. It has the advisory committee to make, to listen to advice, to get advice, and ultimately provide for the user agency to always have input into the project itself. Thank you.
Any discussion? Mr. Bertrand.
Seven-Some-Moye Circle, Chairman of the Permanent Building Committee. As indicated, we did have several meetings with the Bylaw Review Committee, and essentially, our committee had no objection to this bylaw revision, except for one area. We please ask the user agencies not to have up to twenty-five people on an advisory committee. The experience we had with the Galvin, when there was approximately twenty-five people, is that the advisory committee really almost became a nonentity. So we sincerely request the user agency to limit as much as possible the advisory committee. Thank you.
And the Bylaw Committee actually concurs with, with the recommendation that it not get unwieldy as well.
Any further discussion? Being no further discussion, Article twenty-four, that the town amend the general bylaws as described, carry out the purpose of this article. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Article twenty-five. Okay. How long is this one? Okay. To see if the town will vote to amend Chapter one-forty-three of the General Bylaws entitled "Fingerprint-Based Criminal Record Background Checks" by striking A, Section one-forty-three C. entitled "Processing Communication to Results," the first sentence at sub-I, and sub, and sub-double-I, the second, in the words "in addition," and, and inserting the following language as set forth in your program. Mr. Lieber?
That the town amend the general bylaws as set forth in this article.
Second. Mr. Lieber?
Thank you. This article goes ahead and corrects a deficiency in Chapter one-forty-three, the fingerprint-based criminal record, criminal background check bylaw. There are actually two, two issues that the current bylaw has, and this particular amendment, this particular article addresses both of them. Number one, the current bylaw requires that the actual results of the, of the background check be transmitted to the licensing authority. That puts the police in a very difficult situation, because under the updated Corey law that was updated, I believe it was in 2017, that they're actually not allowed to transmit the full results over to the actual licensing authority, such as the town council. They're allowed to, to read it if they are the licensing authority, but for other things such as alcohol licenses, the town council retains the ability to be the licensing authority. They're not allowed to transmit the full Corey. So this actually removes that particular problem and conflict, and does not have the police department in a place where they're supposed to transmit things that could cause them to lose their Corey capabilities. The other component that this particular bylaw change does is it changes the timing, so that when there is a request for, and a requirement for there to be a fingerprint-based background check, which is separate from any other background check that may be, may be requested or required by regulation or otherwise, but for a fingerprint-based background check, which is required for things such as alcohol licenses, it will actually have that background check conducted before the actual application is considered to be fully complete and ready. So the town council, which is the licensing authority for most of the, most of the actual licenses that are issued under this particular bylaw, will then actually have the recommendation from the, the Chief of Police or their designee ahead of time, and so then they can go ahead and, they can still take whatever action they deem appropriate, but we will have a situation where the information is available at the time that the license is actually going to be issued or not issued, and we don't get a situation where a license may be issued and withheld. And that would, that puts us into an untenable situation with someone who may have just made a significant investment in the town. So this goes ahead and corrects those components. There are other components related to background checks that we do recommend be handled through either separate bylaws at a later date through the town council or through regulation. This is isolated just to the fingerprint-based background checks because of state law requirements that we have a specific bylaw that addresses that one component. Thank you.
Any discussion under Article twenty-five? There being no discussion, a motion before you, that the town amend the general bylaws as described, to carry out the purpose of this article. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Making noise over there? You getting excited?
I'm freezing.
Because you're gonna get out of that? All right, you're freezing. Article twenty-seven, to see if the town will vote to hear the report of the Bylaw Review Committee, accept it as a final report of the committee, and discharge the committee. Did that say briefly somewhere in there? Or to see what the town will do about it. Mr. Lieber?
That the town take the actions as specified in the article.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Lieber?
Thank you. This is actually the final report of the Bylaw Review Committee. It's nice and hefty. If anyone wants to read it, I'm quite confident it can be put onto the website, or if we can hand a copy to anyone. The actual prose is not very long, but is quite meaningful. I'll give you a very quick summary. First, we're done. For the, the eight members that were a part of this particular committee, we have completed a true massive amount of work next time that we have reviews in five years. The recommendations is that the issues that were not taken up by town meeting be reviewed and determine whether they should be appropriate in, at a future time. An example of that would be the bylaw that was actually just, that we just decided not to take action on regarding, regarding vacant storefronts. That's one that may be taken up in a few years. At that point, envision Wakefield will be further on. That's an example of one of the recommendations that's being made. This report is really designed as a guidebook for future committees. It also contains the presentations and a full listing of every bylaw that, that we addressed. As a part of this, one component that is in here is specific, specific thanks to all of the different people and boards that work directly with the Bylaw Review Committee. They are named, and it's a very large list. There's a, an immense amount of gratification and gratitude presented to the Chief of Police. Chief Smith came to, I think, about eight different meetings. I need to specify Eric Reed as a member of the public, and a member, former member of the Charter Review Committee, came to about twenty-five meetings. Keep in mind, there were forty-five meetings. That's a lot of meetings to come to. And there were other, other members of the public who came to various meetings, with town administrator came to meetings. We had various members work with the Bylaw Review Committee, so that ultimately, our bylaws reflect the town itself. And with that, the seven members of the Bylaw Review Committee that are, are all listed on here, which include Keith LaGraves, Michelle Liciardi, Brian McCubrey, Cindy Schatz, Jeff Steichman, Bob Vincent, and myself, all really appreciate the input from the public, and we are, we are very happy to have completed this. I can honestly say of the various committees that I've worked on in the town, as well as in industry, this was among the absolute best committees that I've had the pleasure of working with. We had a lot of meetings where we did not all agree, which was perfectly fine, but we always agreed to have civil discussions. I think that in that way, it was a model for how governance can work. Members of the public who came to the meetings were included. Members who were a part of the discussions always felt that they were heard. They were not, their recommendations were not always adopted, were not always accepted, but everyone really did work together. We tried to include as many people, anyone that we knew was interested in a topic, did get contacted. We distributed the workload amongst the committee members, and in the end, we are much more successful. So with that, Mr. Moderator, I'm happy to hand you this report and recommend acceptance.
Is there a second? Did you already second it? Any discussion?
I would just like to add that my good friend, Brian McCubrey, told me once that this committee worked incredibly hard, and that Dan was perfect for the job. Now, we know over the years that Dan has a fascination sometimes with minutia in an article or a motion, and he was the man for the job. And so I just thought I'd throw that out there. You know, I always, McCubey's a smart guy, and he, he didn't ask me to pay, well, he did kinda, he hinted that I passed that along, so I would just like to say that. So I, I think this committee deserves a round of applause. Little pep rally exception.[1742.01][1742.01](applause). All in favor of accepting the report? All opposed?
We are done.
No, no, that's my job.
Well, the Bylaw Review Committee is done.
No, 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 he reverts back to himself right away. Okay.
Because as a private citizen now, I can say that we are, it's been accepted.
Well, as a private citizen, move along.[1763.01][1763.01](laughter). You know, you just had to wreck it, didn't you?
Mr. Moderator, I move that we hereby dissolve the town meeting with special thanks to the town moderator, town clerk.
Whoa, whoa, whoa. What do you want? You want me to buy the first drink?
And W.C.A.T.
Yeah, C.A.T. as always.
Thanks very much. The, uh, second. Thank you, Tom.
Is there a second? All in favor? All opposed? Motion is dissolved.